What's up, what's up, what's up? It's your man Coach Block, one half of TDS Radio and I am here with-
Your girl, so fab, hey y'all.
What's going on everybody? It's a great Tuesday?
Yeah.
Tuesday.
It's your birthday, happy birthday. Deidreana Freeman, right over here, and she has served as Durham's Ward One Councilmember since 2017. Come on, black excellence. Leading with a commitment to equity and justice for all families through her C-justice Agenda focused on social, economic, and environmental justice. She has championed affordable housing, safe and healthy neighborhoods, and renters' rights, girl, we gotta talk about that, and fair pay for public servants. She supported the creation of the Office of Equity and Inclusion and helped pass the citywide nondiscrimination ordinance and Office of Survivor Care. As a wife, a mother, and lifelong advocate, Deidreana is running for reelection to continue building a Durham where every family can survive no matter their zip code or their background. So please welcome Councilmember Deidreana Freeman. Hey now, hey.
Yes. Well, thank you, thank you, thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Let us know what just and fair Durham means. If you can break that down for us who aren't familiar and just kinda need, you know, a little bit more explanation about that.
Definitely. I would say it stems from a lot of the work that I've been doing around anti-racism and organizing against racism. Knowing that when we talk about any type of justice or any type of ism, there are building blocks or in this case bookends to that, and it's usually around race or gender. And when we're figuring out how to make things just and fair, it means that it works for everyone.
Yes.
Not just some, it works for all. And so making a just and fair Durham means that everyone has access to housing.
Yes.
Everyone has access to, you know, the services, whether it's trash or water. Making sure that we are providing what is necessary for people in our community.
Yeah.
To survive and thrive.
And I'm glad that you're talking about survive and thrive because the one thing that we all collectively are having continual conversations with, and there was actually a report that just came out about how millennials literally are using PTO just to rest. They can't afford vacation, but they're just tired. They're tired of not being able to afford, they're tired of not being able to go, they're tired of not being able to do, not being able to have a house, and it's an ongoing thing. So what are your thoughts on just even Durham and how vast it's growing, how quickly it's, you know, getting on the map, and people are interested, they're loving Durham, but we're slowly starting to see the gentrification in the local businesses don't have their footprint as apparent as it was before?
With all that's happening, millennials are one subsection of them. I would say all of the generations are feeling it, especially our senior population, fixed income. There's, when they have to go back to work, barely move, that's a whole other thing. Our millennials are feeling what has been set up by our current government standards.
Yes.
The way in which all of our labor is taxed, which our labor is the way that we're like ascribed value. This is where we, we're missing the mark as a country, as a community, as a city. These things are not the only ways in which people should be, you know, valued. So if you're not working, you're not covering your costs, you're not, you know, covering your rent, your transportation, you're not covering it. Those, that's not how in which I think a just and fair Durham would operate. A just and fair Durham would understand the value of people.
Yes.
And it would also acknowledge, like, not everybody can work, and they should still be able to pay housing, they should still be able to use transportation, which is why we have, you know, I don't know if you know transportation here in Durham, but for the bus, the public buses, they're fare free, just so that we can make sure that everyone-
I did not know that. That's dope.
And the main, my main support for it was not understanding, like, it was 90% car, like, bus-dependent riders.
Yes.
Like, people who don't have a vehicle.
Right.
Then it meant, like, this is the way that people get to and from work.
Yes.
And so you have things that happen, like, say, for instance, the flooding up in North Durham. For anyone whose car was flooded, they're not getting to work for the next two years.
Yeah.
It's over, yeah.
And so if you don't have a fare-free bus, you know, especially as a millennial, you're dependent on this one vehicle, it's now flooded in your apartment complex. What are you gonna do? And at least this way, you could, wherever you were in the city, you could at least ride the Durham City Bus.
Right.
To where you needed to get to.
Yeah.
And, you know, trying to figure all those things out, these are pieces, which is why I'm running again.
Yes.
Because we're not done yet. There are parts and pieces that have all been put in place. And knowing that when you're, when you're so limited that your PTO becomes your vacation, or your time off is just to rest.
Right.
To take a break, rather than, you know, being able to vacation and, you know, kind of reinvigorate yourself. This is, this is not the population of people we want.
Right.
You know, serving and, or out in the workforce, we want to make sure that we're taking good care of the people. I would say that I'm probably one of a few very strong supporters of workers in our community.
Yes.
And that way of understanding that if you don't have, if you don't support your workers, your workers can't support.
Exactly.
You know, who they're supporting in their workspaces. So whether it's trash or sanitation, fire, police, whomever that worker is for the city, I want to make sure that they have all of the resources they need, whether it's mental health resources, whether it's time off, and it's actually like,
Yeah.
Enough to cover their needs as a family member. Even just making sure the parental leave is actually a benefit. You know, like, making sure that, not just the birthing parent, but also the non-birthing.
Yes, absolutely.
These are all things that matter. When you create workspaces that are caring and supportive of your workers, you're creating spaces for millennials that are actually like, where you can spend 20 or 30 years. I don't think people think that's possible anymore. They're chasing dollars.
Exactly.
And the dollars aren't gonna get it.
I have a question for you. Now with you thinking of these things ahead, right? Because the job that you're in, you have to think about people. But let's flip the lens to the people. How can they start to make moves to where they're also thinking about themselves and then the steps that they need to take to assure backing you and your visions that you see? Because people tend to think it's always the next person's responsibility. So what would you say to the person who is just kinda willy-nilly and doesn't really know?
I would say that it's a we thing, not an I or a me thing, that this is something we've gotta do together. So in any space that I'm in, I'm always trying to figure out how we can work together to solve whatever the problem is, create any new solution. And it looks like, you know, all of the different roundtable discussions that we have, that we as in folks that work within the community, organizers.
Yes.
Those spaces that we create to make sure that those conversations are ongoing and looking at what the current issues are, what past issues have been, and how they've been solved, and how they can be solved. That means like getting involved on a very, like, on a very ground, like, ground level, what we say, what we would say is community-rooted level. Because it's not grass tops of grass roots. It's really like this level of like mutual aid is occurring. Because you know that it's not just about government, it's also about what we are doing with each other.
Right.
So whether that's fundraising with each other, whether that's providing food for one another, that's, you know, supporting each other's businesses. All of those things can be occurring at the same time that you're supported by government resources.
I have a question, because, you know, just to get into the political side of it, people oftentimes forget about the midterms. You know, they don't take them as seriously as they should. Yeah, or the local elections, because it's just like, ah, I'll just, I'll just vote for anyone. How do we do a better job of ensuring that that disconnect and that gap gets closer? I think now people are starting to become a little bit aware because, you know, people have dug a pretty deep hole that they're trying to get themselves out of. But there's still, there's still that, you know, that aura of just like, ah, I don't, I don't have to take it as seriously. But then they wanna know who they can point the finger at. So how do we close that gap?
It's, it's a, it's a both, like, both sides of it. The people's side and the people in office. On the people's side, I mean, you have to understand, like, municipal government is what's gonna touch you on a daily basis, right? Trash is picked up.
Yes.
Whether the fire at the neighbor's house is put out, like, those are the things that are gonna impact you directly. And then on the, on the, like, when you get to the, like, county, state, and then national, those things are gonna impact you. Whether you're thinking they are or they're not, when you start to break down where the dollars, all the tax dollars are going, so it's not just your property tax, it's the sales tax, the gas tax, the tax on your vehicle. All those dollars are going someplace.
Right.
And the people who are making those decisions are on, on your elected official side. And then when, I'll say this, I'm one of seven people who decided what was gonna happen with the $766 million of taxes that was brought in in the past, well, for this next tax year. So for '24, was '25, '26, that $766 million is going where I, I as a person, made decisions about priorities. And those priorities are based on, for me, what the people have said.
Right.
And so coming to the people's side, the people who make, who make an effort to be involved have the loudest voices. They get the most, like, the squeaky wheel gets the oil regardless of what's going on, and-
So we better start squeaking around here.
If you haven't been squeaking, you're not making it.
Right.
Right.
And I will say that I've been real intentional about not just listening to people who are squeaking, because I wanna make sure I'm talking to people who aren't always coming to us, seeing us. And they can be like, you know, you don't have the phone number, the email address of the council.
Right, right.
So I wanna make sure I'm in those spaces, but in order to do that, those spaces have to be open. And so I'm not coming to everybody's house. Over almost 320,000 residents in our community, I can't go to everybody's house.
Right, right.
I can't, I can't see everybody at the grocery store.
Right.
I can't catch you at the car wash, but I can see as many as like, you know, maybe 10,000. And of those 10,000, how many of them are actively engaged in, you know, council meetings, or county commission meetings, or school board meetings? Those are your local races, where local impact is the biggest, the largest. And when I say like, things like socioeconomic and environmental, on the social side is the housing. On the economic side is the jobs, the business supports. And then on the environmental side is where the water's going, whether we have clean water or not. Whether you can flush the toilet and it goes someplace that's not your backyard.
Right.
All of those things have direct impact, and the people who are the loudest, the squeaky wheel getting that oil, is gonna have their needs met. Are you getting your needs met?
Right.
If you're not, and you're paying these taxes. And taxes are being directed every single year. So in two years, it's over a billion dollars. In three years, it's like, and all those dollars that aren't going to your direct needs.
Yeah.
It has impact. I'm hopeful that people are paying attention more than they have been in the past, because, you know, we got a second term of a certain president that, it's quite alarming, yes.
To say the least. To say the least.
Super alarming. So the, the other thing that I wanna talk about is tenant rights. And, and it's funny because when we first moved down here, you know, there was a situation my mom had, and she was like, I'm noticing that there's not much that works in favor for the tenant here. You know, Pittsburgh is a completely different story.
Completely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, so what are some things that you are wanting to change or you're wanting to implement to kinda switch that around so it's not so heavily on the landlord's side?
And, and I wanna be really clear in saying, like, the changes that need to happen need to happen at the state level. There are some tweaks and things that we've tried to do here in Durham that have been preempted, which means that the state just kinda says, hey, we don't want you to do that. They take it away. And so the tenants' bill of rights have been things that I've been working on, and, you know, even the source of income discrimination. No one, like, if you get a Section 8 voucher, the ability for you to find a unit is dependent on the landlord saying, hey, I'm nice. As opposed to it not, as opposed to being like civil rights, you not being discriminated against. In our city, I wanna say 98% of those voucher holders may be, I can't quote specific numbers, but I know from the last report that we had, when we had this conversation, they were all black. And so who's, who's getting, like, who's receiving that type of discrimination?
Exactly.
Is very clear, and the solution that we come up should be even clearer.
Absolutely.
You can't do it. But apparently that's not something that the state of North Carolina is interested in, so we have not been able to get that done, we haven't been able to get that moving. And so I'm hopeful that in the future that that will happen. But it's gonna take some strong pushes, and we're getting there. I wanna say, like, it's like, piece by piece, you start building these blocks.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, somebody comes and knocks some of them over.
Yes.
But you keep building. And these last eight years, I think we built, like, part of the way there, and the next four could be the way to get, get there.
Absolutely.
And so when I say the tenants' bill of rights, there's like a whole laundry list of things that the Bull City Tennis United put together that I started to advocate for, to try and push, to make sure that, you know, if a landlord says that they have a refrigerator in the unit, then the refrigerator should work.
Absolutely.
And if you're paying rent with the refrigerator in the unit.
Absolutely.
Then when it breaks, it's replaced.
Absolutely.
Anything with the stove and any other of the appliances.
Yes.
And then also making sure, like, if they're not, like, if they're not part of the lease, then how are we making sure that we have resources available to make sure the people who need them? Those are all just low, low parts of the lease. But when you pull it all together, it becomes a support.
And, and let's speak a little bit on that, because what I'm also noticing a lot is that people think that as soon as you hold office, things change like that. And then now they're in their face, like, I voted for you and I didn't see this, that, and the third, not realizing that there, there's time. Yeah, there's, there's a process to everything.
I tell people all the time, when you feel, when you feel like we're not moving fast enough, keep pushing. Because if there is no push, there'll be no movement. So I, I wanna, I don't wanna begrudge anybody who said, I voted for you, look, I appreciated the vote, and we're gonna keep on pushing. But at the same time, everything moves. I remember one of my mentors saying, you gotta remember that everything, like, in any type of board space, any type of like, once you start to move to a macro or mezzio level, it moves at a glacial speed. And it's like, you're just trying to watch the ice move. And that's what it feels like in anything that you set forward. And so, you know, when I first started, you know, I was able to move like this to get this tire mulch moved out of this park. And it felt like, yeah, you know, you know, we just get some votes together and make it happen. But I tell you, the next few challenges on anything that was moving forward felt like, it, it just, yeah. Because I know for sure that the folk, that folks support having affordable housing in the council, but to have to make that happen, right? Like, it's almost like splinters happen, and everyone's going in a different direction with a different agenda and a different set of votes that are around the table, and that's where it gets all tricky. And being, being patient enough to wait for it to come back together, so. But I do think, you know, a housing plan has been put forward, and, you know, some numbers have been, yeah, and now we can start to move from there. And so hopefully we'll move a little bit faster. Just, I won't even say fast. A little bit faster.
It's a little bit.
You had said something about a park and it triggered something. I work with a young man, or I work with a nonprofit here in Durham called Echo. And there is a magazine that the youth are working on called Shiboka Ice is for You. And one of the topics is like democracy, because we are coming up on election, right? And one of the young men found a story that was written about the parks that had closed because of lead paint. And the story was written last year, and he went and did some research, and the parks are still closed. Now, he wants to fight to see what needs to be done to get the parks reopened. What would you suggest me to tell this young man of where to start his fight?
I would say to get involved.
Come a little closer.
Get involved with the current meetings that are occurring, because they are centering what is, what is the process and what's gonna come out of the process. So when those parks were closed, the-
Okay.
The level of, of, of kind of frustration that I felt is still there. But I do know that everything takes a process. So we're waiting, we're waiting on the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to make their assessments, and then from there, the city has put aside 12 million, it's gonna take at least 24, but we put aside 12 million to at least get started with the parks to remove the lead hazard enough, so I wanna be clear, it's not ever gonna be gone.
Right.
To remove it enough so that it's not a hazard to the kids who wanna play there.
Okay.
I will say that I think about last month, I think in August, there was a huge meeting to kinda give updates, ask some questions, get some feedback. It would be great for that student to be involved in that conversation. That's where the squeaky wheel builds up. Because if you know more, you can, you can say more in the process, when you only have like a little bits and pieces of it, because it's not lead paint, it's lead specifically.
Oh, okay.
Ooh. And that lead in the soil is a lot harder to, I won't say harder, it's a lot more expensive to remove than it would be if it were like, like, lead paint chip. Kinda like, pick those pieces up. We're talking about like, parts per million pieces, or parts per billion pieces being in the soil itself.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
That's tough. I got one more question, because I know you do, because this same student, like, so he hit me, he's like, he's really into the environment, right? So then he hit me about the creek that's by McDougall Projects, the, is it Third, Fifth Creek or something, Third?
Third, Fourth Creek.
Third, Fourth Creek.
Yes.
And he was saying, now, this kid is, he's educating me, so I'm just sitting there listening and went to go check his resources, and he was right. But the water is around McDougall, and then also parts of Central. And he want, he's like, Coach, what do we gotta do? How do we start? And I'm like, I don't know, but I'm gonna find out. So even in that, he wants to get his hands involved in that as well. So what would you suggest?
I would strongly suggest, we have an environmental affairs board, maybe he serves on that board.
Okay.
As a member, because all, they'll get all the updating reports.
Okay.
And at least he'll know what's happening. So I know that the restoration projects that have occurred around Third, Fifth, oh my gosh, Third, Fourth Creek have been ongoing, and a lot has been done around the central area, like by that Burger King. But it's still, I mean, there's still work to be done. And that one creek project, just so we know, like, those creeks run into like, stream, streams run in the creeks, the creeks run into the rivers, and all of that flows into our waterways. I'm not even gonna say that. We spend a lot of money. A lot of money to make sure we clean it up.
Right.
I mean, you see things like algae blooms, which lets you know that the water's not safe to fish out of or swim in. And those, those are all things that we, as a community,
Yes.
need to pay close attention to, because that's where a lot of money is spent.
Gotcha.
It's also where a lot of jobs could be created.
Right, there we go.
But we gotta pay attention on both sides, make sure that we're, we're not harmed by whatever's in the creek. We also wanna make sure we're mindful that the, the way in which we steward our land matters. And so I know when your primary focus is like where I'm gonna get my next meal, how I'm gonna feed my kids,
Yeah.
you're not quite, you're not quite there for the conversation on, you know, hey, this water's not
Right.
the right level of pH, or, you know, this is parts per billion of this, that, or the other. So it's, it's imperative that we find time and space to make sure that we're paying attention to what the environmental side, like, what's happening on the environmental side. I mean, there's also, because we only have one Earth.
Right.
Right.
So you're talking about one mama, mother Earth is one, you got one mom, one Earth.
Right.
And that's, it's, it's, it's slowly but sure, like, we're killing our Earth, and it's not gonna work for any of us.
Yeah.
So that's why I say a just and fair Durham is for everyone. Everyone is on the same page, everyone's moving in the same direction. We're getting, we're getting healthier, we're living longer lives, we have, we have better safety, security, like, we're feeling like this is our community, the way in which we can take care of it.
Absolutely. And given your mission, you know, and given what's happening right now in the US with ICE and Durham emphasizing, you know, constitutional protections at work, where do you kinda stand with that, or what are your thoughts?
And I know I missed the vote at council, but I completely support the Fourth Amendment, right? And making sure that our staff is well protected, and they know exactly what the, the actual, like, rights of each individual, you know, them as staff and the people that they're working with are. I know that when folks think about ICE, they tend to think about, like, you know, people crossing the border, Mexico, this, any of that. I wanna be very clear, like, there's a lot of Haitian, there's a lot, there's also Jamaican, like, there are folks who are here from other countries that have had different immigration troubles that would fall into these, these type of ice holes, ice fields, and, and even put people from African countries, like, immigration in this country is not, it is not set to, of, like, a set it and forget it type. Something we need to put a whole lot more work into, hearing out how to make sure that the people who are here are not just demonized or criminalized
Right.
in a way in which, like, they've been.
Yeah.
And especially not the children.
Yeah.
What are you dealing with?
Right, right.
I mean, yeah, whole other thing. But we're, we're, it is so, it is so backwards. We're actually creating a system in which we enslave people who have come from other countries and try to be here in our country, like. And that is like the most asinine thing I've ever heard of in my life.
Right.
But I'm not, it's not lost on me that that's how capitalism works. So you've gotta find a population to create that labor force that is low wage or no wage, and that is what is going to happen if we keep going in this direction. We've gotta be very careful, because even the people who are being deported to Venezuela, these other, whatever the other country is, that is still, I mean, we gotta be mindful what businesses follow, and who's using that same prison labor that they use here.
Absolutely.
Because that model of how we, this prison industrialized complex is very profitable. And it's so profitable that you see people that you would not expect supportive of. Yeah. When, I actually had a chance to visit the ICE Detention Center in, in Georgia, outside of, I don't know, it was, it was an area that Jimmy Carter was born in. It was the first time I realized, like, we had turned this immigration issue into a job creator for the people of this community. The only job they could really make 12 to 15 dollars an hour in a very rural community.
Yeah.
So what do you think happened? A bunch of us are in the, in, in the system as the leadership, and all of it was, it was like a sci-fi movie. And I don't, I don't wish that on us. I don't wanna see that direction. And so of course, we've gotta figure out how to make sure we're safe. I know, you know, Black August just passed, and losing, you know, such a powerhouse like Assange and Chikor is, is that reminder, like, we've been here before, seen how this operates, and we can't let it, we can't let it take us away.
Yeah.
And I do mean us.
Yes.
You're a mom, you're a husb, you're, you have a husband, you got a life outside of the people. How do you balance?
I think I'm real critical, I make sure that I do what needs to be done, when it needs to be done. And so I keep first things first always, which is like my, my family. And then I also know, like, there's gonna be times where I can't, and when that happens, I wanna make sure that I'm mindful, my daughter's sitting here watching. It's not always gonna work the way you want it to. There's not gonna be a balance. There's no such thing as balance. But what I can say is I'm gonna do everything I can do in my power in the 24 hours that I have to do what needs to be done. Whether that's, you know, making phone calls, you know, connecting folks together, creating spaces for people to, you know, bring food or whatever it is. I'm gonna do what needs to be done, and you've gotta understand that. I think it's, it's healthier for my children to see their mother doing that work than it is to just be at, you know, in service to them as my family.
Is there still that space, though, for, for self-care, where you don't run yourself into the ground?
Absolutely. I think my first, my first term, I ran myself into the ground, and it wasn't until my second term that I figured out, hey, it has to be some rest.
Yeah, yeah.
It has to be some rest, because rest is resistance, and I need to resist.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but I, I've been really clear, like, I joined the nap ministry and everything, so like, around
I know that's been nap ministry.
2:30, 3 o'clock, if I can get a 20, 30 minute power nap in, I'm gonna do that. I also am really, like, I, I take really good care of myself.
Good, good.
Way better than I did the first time. And I will say, like, so I'm getting my nails done, my hair did, making sure that, you know, all my appointments are free. You know, I have my, what do you call it, mammogram?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I still need to get that colonoscopy, because I'm over 45. But all of those things are important, because I'm important. And me being here for my children, my family and my community is important. So I have to take care of me. I have to make sure that I am getting what I need. Or it won't work.
Do you feel at times, and I know this this question could be tough, that our people just tug a little bit more at times and you kind of want us to ah, you got it. Like we need you to go do the thing. Whatever the thing is, go do it. You, do you see that we don't exercise our power as much as we should? Cause we have.
Absolutely. I think there's 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 two different sides. Well, there's many different sides. There's two that I'll talk about. There's there's this this mindset of like, I've made it and I'm good. I don't wanna rock this boat. Which is not healthy. And it doesn't help us because when they figure out that, you know, it's not meant for you anyway. Like the system's not meant for you anyway. And I mean, that's not just limited to black people. That's working for working class, middle class folks of any race. This system is not made for you to win. It is made for you to to survive. Like the Hunger Games. And then there's these folks who are like, it's real serious when you walk down the street and you see people who have complete psychosis. That is their life. That mental health need that is not being met is there. And they are not able to take care of themselves. Like this, like this, these, these, this dichotomy of like this system is not serving many of us. It's really meant for that one percent. And as long as we continue to uphold it the way that it is and we don't challenge it, we don't push, we don't like, we don't pull it apart. We're gonna continue to hurt and we're gonna continue to see these problems exacerbate. I think COVID really highlighted a lot of it for more of us than it did before.
Absolutely.
Because I think we were getting through. You were, you know, you could buy your car, get a nice bag. You could take this trip for that. And that's not enough.
Yeah, rent was only eight hundred dollars for certain people. A a woman uh who was working at Duke, she said that uh she made an announcement saying that her rent is now like twelve hundred dollars. Yeah, her rent is twelve hundred dollars, but her pay at Duke, as we know, Duke has those issues, wasn't going up. So she didn't know what her next step was. Cause she's like, I'm making major decisions of eat, light. And so in those type of situations where we have somebody and she was an older woman, you know what I mean? Like you, you, she's probably going towards, I'm about to retire or hopefully I wish I could retire. But then when you're staring down the barrel of like, I don't know if my retirement might be enough. When we see these type of fights, you know what I mean? Cause these are fights that, like you said, are on state levels that we have to attack. But then the community ourselves, what can, what bootstrapping techniques might we be able to put together so that we can start taking care of ourselves and say, you know what? The hell with y'all up there. We just gonna look out for us as a community.
And and I would say that there's a lot, there's a lot in that question. I will say my mom worked at Duke as a contractor. Because, you know, they turned all the jobs into contractors in the food hall. And it was at the point where she um, she could work thirty eight hours, never get to forty. It just wasn't gonna ever get to full. And that situation that she was in as an older adult, she's over sixty. It was not gonna ever be enough to cover. She had to find a different job. And then she was working two jobs and then she started a business. All of that to say, uh, if we don't create spaces, so I wanna give a really huge shout out to Communities in Partnership. Who is doing some food systems work and trying to figure out how to make sure that we have the food that we need to feed ourselves. And that looks like, you know, a market, a co-op, we pick up food. At no or low cost. And then also like supporting food entrepreneurs. Those are the type of systems that need to be in place outside of government. But of course it needs government support to get started. But once it's going, it should be sustainable for the long run. And so the partnerships they created with with uh farmers and, you know, um food producers across the state provides for a number of folks in our community. Now, that is very small. When you talk about like maybe a hundred, two hundred, that can't support three hundred thousand people. And so what that looks like is is gonna be very different. And so I see a lot of mutual aid programmings coming online. I see people setting up um community refrigerators. Where they're stocking it, just out of their, you know, the kindness of their heart. Those are the things that that have to be supported. And I wanna say that it was was through COVID and the dollars that were made available that a lot of it got turned on in a way. COVID dollars have left. It's not over. The COVID dollars have left. Now what are we gonna do? Now what are the systems we're gonna put in place to support? Because there are those who are in position to reinvest in community. What does that look like? And who's turning on the power source or the, you know, figuring out how to draw those folks in together. Uh, how 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 do I use my platform to make sure that the right people are in the right world?
You said something right there and sorry, Kim, I'm sorry. I I went in, I'm, you know me, I get the flow. Cause it's, there's words. I look at it like this sometimes, cause dealing with those that have mental health, one, dealing with those who are young, like where they're now starting to get their vote, first vote and things like that. Could you explain the role of a council person?
Oh, sure. So a Durham city council person, because I wanna be really clear, they're different in different areas. There are um situations where there's a weak mayor and a and a strong mayor. We are in a weak mayor, weak mayoral city. And our council provides gov- or budgetary support for the city manager. City manager actually runs the day to day operations for the city of Durham. And the council is specifically there for oversight. And we have three employees, the city manager, the city clerk who keeps the record and the city attorney who tries to keep us all out of jail. Those three employees are really the main focus of the city council. And all of the initiatives, you know, on the policy side that we set are what they try to implement. So as a council member, we bring forward different policies, like like I was talking about before, Lieutenant's Bill of Rights. Or um, you know, the the non discrimination of source of income. Those are the types of things you bring forward. And then the council has to make a decision on whether wanna implement, whether we wanna uh pass the policy or not. And so recently, I think we started, we had a conversation about um squirrels. And whether or not, you know, it was, whether or not it was a good idea to pass um ordinance that would allow people or to tell people to stop eating the squirrels. Cause the squirrels were tearing up people's cars and their homes. You know, leaving leaving too much food out for the squirrels was was becoming a problem.
Squirrels.
Policy if it moves forward, the council would vote. And if it passed, then it would be an ordinance and that would be implemented by city staff.
If we can do things about damn squirrels, then there's a lot of work that we can do. I need people to get involved. Damn squirrels. If we talking about squirrels.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I would say that that there's po- the policy that's like, you know, passing the non discrimination ordinance. Um, passing, you know, so I could wear my hair big Afro. Or with braids or treads, like all of those things are coming through council. And then being implemented by staff. Um, I will also add that the council is kind of like the I won't say that. There are seven, there are seven members of council. Four are, four, I'm sorry, not yet. That's that's when I pass that ordinance. And three are um ward seats. So there's ward one, two and three. I live in ward one, uh, the council member in ward two, and then the council member in ward three. Um, they have to live in their ward, but the entire city actually votes. And so it's an at large role, um, which is voted on at large. I would love to see it be true ward. That's not yet. And then we add a couple seats. But um, the couns- I as a council member, I am paid part time to serve on this council as a member of the board. We go to uh work sess- two work sessions and two council meetings a month and we serve on different boards, committees and commissions.
A lot of reading. So there there's a lot of ugliness happening politically where people are taking personal jabs at people on Twitter and all that. You know, talking about people's appearances and, you know, their their education and things are even becoming racial. How do you protect yourself as a black woman? And then how do you protect each other as brown and black people when you're serving?
It's interesting because I know recently I had an incident um with a county commissioner. And it was unfortunate, but I feel like if 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 I had to, if I had to say, I wouldn't have expected did to be gaslit. Which I've been gaslit, but there's this this intentionality around painting me as a black woman as an angry black woman. Which in no way, shape or form, the way I show up in any space, but it is something you can get me to. I wanna be really clear where where where's anything involving my children, my husband, my family, anything involving like complete and total like disrespect.
But isn't that a human reaction?
You would think so. I can't feel anything. Should never cry. But I think what what I what I realized is that that emotional baggage or the emotional uh standard expect you to hold is is critically like wrong. And I'm not, I'm not willing to sacrifice. So the same time, when when we talk about self care, my self care means I'm gonna address it. And when I address it, however you feel you need to go with it, that's fine, but I'm gonna make sure you understand.
Why do people have a hard time with that? I had to do that today. The person's response was as if I was not supposed to address you. I addressed you because I didn't want any misunderstandings and now we're gonna set some boundaries.
But you're black and you're supposed to be superhuman.
I'm a black woman, so I'm supposed to be ladylike at all time. And never ever raise my voice.
Exactly.
Those are all things I'm working on. Look, I'm a work in progress. I believe in faith. I go to church on Sundays, some Sundays, not all, but I'm a work in progress. I'm not a saint. And I won't say everything that I've done has been perfect, but I will say I always try to do what's right. And so in in trying to make sure that, you know, what people say is not always a matter of like truth or anything remotely close. But when people say things that are true or or I should say it the other way, when people say things that aren't true, I think it's incumbent upon us to at least call it out. At least make sure that people understand. And when people say things that are true, I think it's, you know, it's good to be retrospective and introspective, making sure that you're taking stock. And so I'm 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 not opposed to any critical feedback. I've gotten lots of it. And I will not be, you know, cussing out the the pastor in the back. I really just know like I'm gonna make sure my my brother understands when you're wrong. But I do, I do, I mean, I'm clear that, you know, my self care means I'm gonna make sure that I am delivering the message, whom I need to deliver the message. And however folks feel about that.
Absolutely. I know that's right. I know that's right. And I'm so, I'm so glad. I'm noticing that more, especially with, you know, black women who are holding seats in office and things like that where they're just like, it's me.
Like Jasmine Crockett was a built body, I I would have did it, but I couldn't.
You just called me, I'll give you a good cuss out. Put me on speaker, I'll say it. And and uh, cause I I know it's your birthday, we don't wanna take up all your time. First of all, the one thing I wanna say is thank you. Thank you for coming onto our platform because this is, this is what we built TDS for. You know, to bring community back, to bring local voices back, to bring the messaging back that is lost through syndication. And the fact that you took the time out of your busy schedule to say, you know, I'm gonna talk to two kids from Pittsburgh that started a radio station. So greatly appreciated. And if I knew it was your birthday, I would have pulled out all the stops. Yo cake here, would have had a present, happy birthday. But the one thing I do wanna discuss before you go is just small businesses. We know that that is the backbone of Durham. Of even Raleigh, we're a small business, you know. And a lot of people are scared, you know, they're they're scared because it's just like, does small businesses still hold a place in Durham anymore? You know, can we afford to still operate as small businesses? Do people even wanna patronize small businesses because there's so much happening? What would you say to the community of small businesses out here? We're just like, I I I'm in limbo. I don't know which way to go.
I would say, hang on. I would say that the resources are more readily available than folks think. And uh, I should say, I did a lot of, I did a little bit of work around access to capital. I learned a whole lot about what could be done to support small businesses. We have not, we just are getting our feet planted. Um, our new executive director of workforce and economic development uh started July fifteenth.
Super recent.
So I would say that just hang on, cause Durham is really about small businesses. Durham is about local businesses. And we want your small businesses to grow. We don't want it just to be small. I am really um excited to know, like to know that um Joshua Guns is the director. Yes, he is. And I think in his, it's this, this is his wheelhouse and I wanna at least give him a chance to build the runway. And to follow him for at least the first year. Uh, if I should be reelected.
When? I couldn't get it out fast enough, thank you.
I wanna be really clear that this part of econo- like economic development, workforce development, small businesses are who hire. Small businesses are the major hiring hub we have in this city. And if we don't turn it on, we're, we're, I mean, all of our younger folks, they're gonna go to other cities. Other, you know, metropolitan areas. And we do not want that to happen. That's where the the magic is. If you guys were still in Pittsburgh, I wouldn't have you here today. We wanna keep our folks.
Pittsburgh is stale as hell. It's that way because like what you just said, a lot of the resources, once they graduate, they'll, you know, we got great universities and things like that. We don't have a lot of opportunity. So once people graduate, they're like, where's the jobs? And everybody's looking, no jobs, I'm out.
And we don't want that to happen. Great, you know, NCCU here. There's a wealth of human resources that are coming here to study. And then also, I mean, all of these high school students who are coming out every year, they all need something like whether it's, you know, trades. Cause you know, this electrical work here. And you know, plumbing, all those things have to be covered and how they're covered will matter. I wanna say like, you got a friend in me for small business. I am not going anywhere regardless. And I know that, you know, it's about connection, making sure that those folks who are in spaces uh know how to reach you. And I will say that Chisa has done a really good job with Give It To The People on setting up the small business um networks. And trying to make sure that people know like, not specifically black businesses are networked in a way that's beneficial to the city. Because I wanna say we, you know, this is the city of Black Wall Street. The North Carolina, like Black Wall Street was here in Durham. And it's it's disappeared. And we need to bring it back. That builds for everyone. We have strong black businesses, strong Hispanic businesses, Latina businesses. We have strong women owned businesses, all of the MWBE businesses, you know, Met Week's coming up in a couple weeks. But um, all of those small, all of the businesses, cause I wanna, I wanna, I'm trying to take the episode small. They should be midsize and. But in order for that to happen, it's gonna take. And try to turn some things on that will make sure that resources are available to small businesses here in Durham.
So when you win, will you come back?
Definitely.
Are there any final words that you have for anyone?
I would say that um, we're at a critical time. And I know we're talking about, I'm here and I'm talking about municipal elections. Talking about my race, but I wanna be really clear, like all of the judges, the sheriff, the DA, your state, house and senate members will all be running as of December. I wanna encourage you to get all of them out here. Especially here in Durham, but also. Especially here in Durham, but also across the triangle. Um, making sure that they speak to your audience. And make sure that people understand like how all of these, um, offices operate. You're paying for them. You're all paying for them. And they should, their wages should make your wages back.
Absolutely.
We'll put that clip in emails immediately.
Before you go, is there, is there a local business you would like to plug that we could bring onto our platform?
Um, definitely Kail's Kitchen, which has moved into Easter. It's old, old Easter, I should say. On, um, Andrew and Driver, they're right there in the corner where Joe's Diner used to be. And they have been feeding folks through the late evening into the wee hours of the morning. And now they have a storefront property. Storefront location in their open mall. It would be great to get Kail's Kitchen in.
Alright, that'll be next.
I'll leave it, I'll leave it with you.
Once again, we thank you for being here. Can't wait for you, for the celebration. Can we get the party celebration invite once you get re-elected?
A hot wire.
Alright, cool. Definitely.
We get invited somewhere.
Uh, don't you.